Good morning, everybody. Today is Wednesday, July 25th, year 2000.
...
Good morning, everybody. Good morning and welcome to the meeting of the Los Angeles City Council for today, Wednesday, July 25th, the year 2001. It is about 10:20 a.m. Council meets Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Fridays at 10 a.m. We can also be viewed on Channel 35, City View, or heard via City Phone, or viewed via webcast on the city's homepage. Clerk, please call the roll.
Burnson, Glanter, Garcetti, Hahn, Holden, Misakowski, Pacheco, Perry, Reyes, Ridley, Thomas, Wax, Weiss, Stein, and Padilla, ten members present and in court. Mr. President.
First order of business?
Approval of the minutes.
Mr. Garcetti moves. Ms. Misakowski seconds.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Ms. Perry moves. Mr. Reyes seconds.
Before starting the regular agenda, there's a few items to be continued. Item number one and two, the applicant and Council District Five concur on a continuance on this, these matters until October 3rd.
Colleagues' requests to continue items one and two. Without objection, those items are continued to October 3rd.
Item number eight, a request from Council District One to continue that matter until July 27th.
Colleagues' request to continue item number eight. Without objection, that item is continued.
Item number 15, a request from Council District One to continue that matter until August 1st.
Colleagues, item number 15, without objection, that shall be continued as well.
And item number 22A, a request from Council District One to continue that matter until Friday, July 27th.
Without objection, that item is continued.
Mr. President, that brings you to the regular agenda, items numbers three through seven, which are items for which public hearings have been held.
Colleagues, items three through seven are before us. Hearings have been held on item three through seven. We do have a number of cards on item number seven. Would require a motion from the floor to reopen the public hearing. Any specials?
Yeah.
Item seven is called special by Councilmember Misakowski. Items three through six are now before us.
I'd like five special.
Item five called special by Councilmember Hahn. Any other specials?
Mr. President, item number three is an ordinance. Do you wish to hold that on the desk until you have 12 members?
Actually, Mr. Wax has joined us. The roll reflects his presence here. We now have 12 members. Items three, four, and six remain before us, colleagues. Any other specials? Seeing none, clerk, please open the roll on items three, four, and six. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Those items are approved.
Mr. President, items numbers nine through 24 on the regular agenda are items for which public hearings have not been held. Item number 15 and 22A have been acted on. Item number 20, a motion is required from the floor, and as much as there's two reports on one file.
Colleagues, items nine through 24, with the exception of the continuation items, are before us. Any specials? I do not have cards from the public or requests to speak on those items. Mr. Garcetti? Mr. Garcetti calls item number 20 special. Any other specials? Mr. Holden calls 13 special. Any other specials? We'll deem the public hearing open and closed for those items, seeing no requests to speak. Clerk, please open the roll on the balance of the items. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Those items are approved.
Mr. President, that brings you to the continuation agenda, item number 26. It's an item for which public hearing has been held.
Colleagues, item number 26 is now before us. Anybody wishing to call that special? Seeing none, public hearing has been held on that item. Clerk, please open the roll on item 26. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Item 26 is approved. Next item, please.
Mr. President, that brings you back to item number five, called special by Councilmember Hahn.
Colleagues, item five is now before us. The Chair recognizes Ms. Hahn.
Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, clearly, one of the more difficult issues that I believe I am grappling with is the Harbor Area Secession Movement. Clearly, I have a large number of my constituents who are so frustrated, are so unhappy, are feeling so disconnected from city government, this city government, that they feel they would be better off if they were their own city, they feel they would be better off if they could control their own destiny. A lot of those issues we dealt with in rewriting our city charter a few years ago. What we have before us today is this 600-page report, which I received on Friday. And in our committee meeting, Councilwoman Misakowski and I had a very lively debate with the applicants who came down to City Hall to continue to voice their concern about the process. Unfortunately, to keep the process moving, which is something I have pledged to do for my constituents who want to leave the city, we must pass this report on to LAFCO by the end of the week. So it is, it is the city's response to LAFCO's initial financial report and to the applicant's report for reorganization. Our CAO brought up good issues. There are still so many issues, like how do we divide employees? How do we divide the debt? Is this new city going to be able to stand on their own? And if they are, does that just mean they get less services? Does that mean they're going to have to pay more? There's charter issues that still have to be dealt with. There's possible state legislation that needs to be dealt with. So I guess my, my point is, I recommend that we approve this report. I recommend that we pass it on to LAFCO. But my, my concern is that we continue to urge LAFCO to address these issues, to continue to move forward on this process. They're looking to possibly put this and the Valley vote on the, on the November 2002 ballot. I don't think those of us who will be voting on this want to vote on this issue without every bit of information we need to make a responsible decision. I think these issues need to be addressed. I urge LAFCO in accepting our response to move forward and make sure that when we all vote on this issue, we have every bit of information we need to decide whether or not those of us who live in those areas want to become our own city, but we do it responsibly. So.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The Chair recognizes Ms. Misakowski.
Thank you, Mr. President. Members of the council, this is similar to what we went through a few weeks ago, and that is, this is the city's official response back to what LAFCO had sent out as an initial fiscal analysis. These are the issues that, for any area that, any applicant's proposal relative to secession, we have to look at and give a response on the financial side as to whether or not the analysis was correct, whether it left some gaps, whether it left some issues that were unresolved, or, as in this case, some discrepancies. And so that's what this is. It's really a technical report from all the city agencies responding to LAFCO and saying to LAFCO that now as LAFCO is charged with doing the comprehensive fiscal analysis, these are issues which must, must be addressed. It, it is neutral on the, on the issue of secession. It is a financial analysis saying that as something is being put to the voters, it must be thoroughly reviewed, thoroughly analyzed, so that any, all voters will have all of the facts at hand and all the information, at least to the financial impact on the financial side, as we all make our decision when we go to the polls. What Ms. Hahn has indicated, and is appropriate, that there were issues brought up particularly with relation to this in the testimony at our hearing on Monday, which talked about issues, whether or not it's the city of Los Angeles or a future city of the harbor, that has legitimate issues today with the Port of Los Angeles. And the Port of Los Angeles, as we know, is proprietary and essentially somewhat of an independent entity unto itself. And right now, the, I think some of the most significant impacts that are occurring for the Harbor community are those, those impacts as they relate to the Port of Los Angeles and the ability of the citizens in and around the Harbor to influence and impact that. And as Ms. Hahn has indicated, she is not going to wait for issues of secession to come forward. She's going to take that and tackle those issues now, and I think we heard that already last week when we heard the, the shipping line issue. But in any case, I think we should move this forward. It is recommended by the CAO, recommended by the city attorney, all the departments have thoroughly reviewed it. It should be sent to the mayor for his concurrence, as it is then sent to LAFCO, so that they can include it in their analysis, which is the next step of the process.
Thank you. Mr. Holden.
Mr. President, members, we should go through the process because that's what the people want. People of San Pedro, people of San Fernando Valley, they want to, these be given into consideration where they can decide up or down on whether or not they want to secede from the city of Los Angeles. Once given all the facts, such as water, such as the sewer system, the sewer system, and when they, and then police service, and seven minutes response time is a goal, 40 minutes being proactive, being seen by police officers, and all those things under consideration, we're going to spend a lot of money giving them an opportunity to vote up or down on the issue, and I think they'll vote down, especially San Pedro.
Pedro.
Pedro. Rudy tried to correct me on that also. San Pedro, since they have a councilperson, Ms. Hahn, who's represented them well already, speaking out yesterday on a very important issue, and they have a mayor from San Pedro. They already have their mayor, so they can't secede, cooperate, form a city, and elect a mayor. They can't do any better than what they have already. So I think if the vote were to be held today in San Pedro, they will vote it down for many reasons, including the ones I just mentioned. In the Valley, of course, the sewer system, you know, the sewage that's going down the tubes stays in the Valley just 24 hours, Mr. President, members, and ends up in the inner city. In fact, they're tearing up my district, they call it the Easts Project, for the purpose of taking it down to the processing plant. So it's one city underground, no matter what, and I'm sure when the vote's taken and the way it's set up by Sacramento, it'll be one city after the vote as well, except if some of you would like to be mayor of the third district in the Valley, or somebody, Joe, the second district, if you come back, they give you less money, you want to serve anyway. So, you know, it's, it'll work out. Mr. President, you know, you have, your position is, you know, is all over, global, but you can be mayor of the seventh district, and the list goes on. Some part of the Valley, for example, will say, "We don't want to be associated with Panorama City." They want to separate. And the list goes on and on and on. So I think the people are going to wise up and do the right thing. People who are elected are doing a good job for their respective districts, and they'll remain the same.
Thank you. Mr. Stein.
Mr. President and colleagues, Councilmember Hahn mentioned San Pedro. The secession movement started in the San Fernando Valley. It then spread to San Pedro and took on like a wild fever to other communities in Los Angeles. As the elected member of the third district, I join my colleagues here with the new environment in Los Angeles. I think this study will show clearly that there's liabilities, there's possibilities. But when you look at our council president from the San Fernando Valley, and you look at the infusion of new people on the city council with term limits, a new charter, I think people will have a feeling that it's not business as usual in City Hall, and it's not business as usual for the taxpayers of Los Angeles. Well, I think the study will clearly show that we can survive as a city and prosper as a city, as a unified city, and we could all maintain that image that we want to portray in Los Angeles. But the division, I believe, will be harmful. I think the study clearly shows that the costs will be prohibitive in certain areas, and the delivery of services will not improve in areas. So it's a wait-and-see opportunity as November 2002 approaches, and I think the voters of the city have to recognize that this council with this leadership and this new direction is an inspiration for them, an inspiration for the Los Angeles that we all want to see. And as a native of this city, I know it was better in years past, and I join my colleagues in making it better for the future. But again, once the facts are presented, the people will analyze those, and in November 2002, if we've done our job between now and then, they won't want us to secede, they'll want to stay united from the San Fernando Valley to the Harbor, from the east to the west.
Mr. Burnson.
Keeping our president intact.
And you are the final speaker. Clerk, please open the roll on item number five. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
That item is approved. Next item, please.
Item number seven called special by Councilmember Misakowski.
Ms. Misakowski.
Mr. President, you indicated there were a number of cards with people who would like to speak. I would like to ask the staff come up to present the case and then move a 10-minute public hearing.
Okay. Hold your time while staff comes forward.
Mr. President, honorable councilmembers, my name is Frank Eberhard, a member of the staff, and with me is Mr. Davies, also a member of the Planning Department staff. What you have before is a reenactment of the unchanged framework element of the general plan. This element composes the broad conceptual basis for the general plan. The matter was previously adopted to you in 1976, subsequently been challenged in the courts, is now back to you to remedy that. Mr. Davies, we'll give you the details on that.
Again, in summary, this, the framework element was adopted in 1996. The, there was a legal challenge to the environmental impact report, not to the framework element itself, which was not at issue. That has worked its way through the courts, from Superior Court up to the Court of Appeal, back to Superior Court. And the action that's before you, which was the recommendation of the Director of Planning in consultation with the city attorney, and is the unanimous recommendation of Plum Committee, is to opt for the third of the choices provided by the courts, which was to adopt a revised set of SEQA findings and a statement of overriding considerations, and thereby, thereafter, readopt the general plan framework.
Ms. Misakowski.
I had moved a 10-minute public hearing. I don't know if there was a second.
Okay.
Okay.
There's a second. Well, seems like there won't be an objection to that. Let's reopen then the public hearing and hear from members of the public. Council calls forward Ms. Pam Cook, to be followed by Steve Twining.
Good morning, members of council. Mr. President, I come before you today to basically say what we need is an analysis of the general plan framework and mitigation measures within the city. This statement of overriding considerations lacks substantial evidence. It's merely conclusions as far as what is put together to adopt the new statement pursuant to the court order. What we really need, ladies and gentlemen, is an analysis of mitigation measures and actual planning in this city. I believe your planning department has actually let you down. The last time that there has been a real analysis of mitigation measures in the city was in 1998, for the period of '94 to '96. While the amended findings of the Plum do try to bring that about in, or correct that in asking for an actual report, what we're talking about, ladies and gentlemen, from the general plan framework, is a statement that the annual report on growth and infrastructure, which is what the document is called, analyzes the mitigation measures. It is an annual report, and the general plan framework says that it is essential, essential to the analysis of mitigation measures. So what we're looking for you to do, and I am a vice president of the Hillside Federation and also am representing residents of Beverly Glen, what we're looking for you to do is to perform an actual analysis of mitigation measures and really hold planning to the wall in terms of looking at what our, how our city is impacted and how we can really make this city work by analyzing mitigation measures. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
And I do request that the council at least take the time to continue this matter, take a good look at the planning department's determination, and to do what is right for the city in making a thorough analysis of this issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Steve Twining, to be followed by Polly Ward.
It's Twining, sorry.
Excuse me.
I am the chairman of the Hillside Federation, formerly president. I'm president of the Roscommon Valley Association in Bel Air. Transportation in this city is a disaster. There are all sorts of plans in front of you for the expansion of the airport, for UCLA's expansion. We need a, some sort of a rapid transit up the 405, up the Sepulveda Pass. We need exposition. We need Chandler. We need Wilshire. The reason the Valley and the Harbor area are considering secession, one of the reasons is the transportation situation in the city. During the Plum hearings, one of the councilpersons indicated that the general plan really doesn't matter. Well, it does matter. We need a decent general plan in this city. As Ms. Cook just said, the annual report that was last issued, was issued in '98, covering the period of '94 to '96. Statement of overriding considerations is not adequate. At least, we should have a continuation of this item. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Ward, to be followed by Bob Locker.
I'm Polly Ward. I'm the current president of the Hillside Federation. We call upon the city to reject the proposed statement of overriding considerations and the proposed findings as not supported by substantial evidence. We also call upon the city to revise and recirculate the EIR for the general plan framework as required by the Court of Appeals in our case and as required by the California Environmental Quality Act. Finally, we call upon the city to actually implement the promise of ongoing annual monitoring to update demographic forecasts that underpin the plan in the EIR. And I would request also that you not rush to judgment here, but that you take the time to total, fully analyze what you're looking at. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Bob Locker, to be followed by Lawrence Teeter.
I'm Bob Locker, president of Pacific Palisades Residents Association, and I agree with the previous speakers that substantial evidence does not support the statement of overriding considerations. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Teeter, to be followed by Mike Sinkoff.
Yes, I'm the attorney for the Federation of Hillside and Canyon Associations and Coalition Against the Pipeline, the two organizations which successfully brought suit against the city under the California Environmental Quality Act, challenging the general plan framework the first time around. The Court of Appeal, as a result of our victory, issued a ruling which required the city to take one of three steps: either curtail development of the city, increase mitigation to correct the impacts, or address the impacts associated with that development, or adopt a statement of overriding considerations. The city has chosen unwisely to adopt the third course, because apparently it doesn't want to curtail development, and it doesn't want to increase mitigation. Now, the city's program for mitigating traffic impacts, called the TIP, has now been finally acknowledged to be infeasible, because it depends upon funding sources outside the city, which may or may not exist, or which may, may cease to exist in the future. Yet, your planning document has no mechanism for downsizing or limiting development in the event that funds from other levels of government cease to exist to pay for traffic mitigation. The result is that your document sets up a situation in which the city is virtually, virtually inevitably going to find itself in violation of state planning law, which requires that development and transportation, or the circulation and land use elements of a general plan, to use the technical terms, be correlated. Your, the kind of development you're willing to, to tolerate and, and accept is going to be vastly disproportionate to the capacity of a city to mitigate the impacts created by that development. And that's a violation of state planning law, and we put you on notice about that. This case was cited in the appeal briefs, and we urge you to reject the general plan framework in its present forms and to go back, in its present form, and to go back and revise findings and recirculate the EIR, because the court said you have to do that.
Thank you very much.
If your decision is going to increase impacts, and it certainly is.
Thank you. Mr. Mike Sinkoff, to be followed by Joan Lux.
Good morning. My name is Mike Sinkoff. I assisted in some of the legal research on the Hillside Federation case. The revised findings that, that are before this council today do not comply with the minimum requirements of SEQA. The revised findings do not address the extent to which the city programs to mitigate will, will reduce or eliminate the impacts of framework-accommodated growth on the transportation system. The findings didn't, do not consider at all how effective the city programs, which, which the city is now say, says can be funded, will, will mitigate growth that will be accommodated by the framework. All that the findings do, it, it jumps right to cumulative impacts. It says, "Well, if you look at the cumulative impacts of framework-accommodated growth and regional growth, there's no way all those impacts together can be mitigated." But SEQA requires that you look at the impacts of the project in isolation before you get to cumulative impacts. I have expanded on my argument somewhat in a, in a letter that I submitted this morning, and I also submitted additional written testimony at Plum, which spells out this argument in a little bit more detail. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Ms. Joan Lux, to be followed by Michelle Groomet.
Good morning, Joan Lux, and I'm speaking on behalf of the Hillside Federation and Coingapass Neighborhood Association. The issues that I wish to mention here is that we request some basic mechanism to tie growth with infrastructure. The planning department conceded in their own report that the development could impact transportation and infrastructure, should the transportation infrastructure not be implemented. So your own department is telling you that there is a problem. Third, per the report, to periodically monitor, to evaluate impacts is kind of a Band-Aid approach, as opposed to giving a, an overview and an outline, which is what the general plan framework is supposed to do. We request a no-growth and a slow-growth approach. Plum's request to modify finding K language from insure and guarantee to provide tools substantially changes the EIR, and as a result, must be rewritten legally. You're defying the court's order by doing that. You can't change the words insure, guarantee, which is in your own document, to just provide tools. It minimizes it. We request a rewriting, recirculation. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our final speaker will be Michelle Groomet.
Groomet.
Groomet. I was right the first time. Thank you.
The city admits that it will have to rely on the Metropolitan Water District for, for water, and as we all know, water is hard to come by. The city acknowledges, in their own documents, that it lacks the water resources to accommodate all the growth that's talked about in this general plan. That's why, those of you who are talking, this general plan framework is something very important. This affects everybody in this city, in San Pedro, in South Los Angeles, and East Los Angeles. And many of us are very concerned about the fact that in their own document, MX-10, they talk about 130 to 200 people living per acre with high density. This is what it's about. And do we have the infrastructure to accommodate all this? I'm with the Coalition Against the Pipeline Pollution. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That concludes the public hearing on this item. The Chair recognizes Ms. Misakowski.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm sure that Mr. Burnson will also want to speak. For members of the council who aren't familiar with this, the general plan framework came about in the early 90s, as we had seen a problem in our sewer capacity. And that was the first significant infrastructure link that we recognized, that until we had provided upgrade to our sewer capacity at Hyperion, we could not be allowing new sewer connections and more sewage to be dumped into the system. So we put a cap. We put a cap on the number of building permits that would allow sewer connections every year until we provided the upgrade to the sewage system at, at Hyperion that met federal mandates. It was from that that the city determined that we should do a general plan framework, which is to link together all of our 35 which is to link together all of our 35 community and district plans, all of the elements, and weave it together, exactly as the Hillside Federation people and other spokesmen have asked for. And that is, what is the framework for growth in this city? What will the impacts be? Where and how will the infrastructure manage it? An important element of that framework is the issue of monitoring. How good are we at reaching the infrastructure build-out, the infrastructure capacity, to handle the potential growth? Not only the potential growth that might be allowed in each one of the district plans, which are limited and focused and specific, but also overall in the regional growth. The biggest element of infrastructure focus in that general plan framework is transportation. And the issues of transportation not only come from the growth generation of just repopulating ourselves in this community, but other, but also outside, regional growth coming through our transit systems. This framework recognizes that the majority of the infrastructure and transportation cannot be borne by the city alone. It must be borne by assistance from Caltrans, from MTA, from all these other regional agencies to do their part to help us handle that that is coming to and through the city. In recognizing that, we are at some potential for imbalance until the state comes through. And that's what this new mandate from the judge comes back to say. What, are there, how can you handle this? Should we recirculate the EIR? Can we come up with overriding consideration statement that acknowledges this? And then, what do we do about it? And I think the most important part of that is what do we do about it? And I think, as was indicated by some of the speakers, the most important thing we can be doing about it is do what is required annually. Do a measure. Determine, are we in sync? How far out of sync, synchronization are we with what is the infrastructure and the expectation? And what, and how should we deal with it? What are the tools that we need to look at, or should we be looking at, to minimize the impact, to mitigate the impact? And the important part of this element is that monitoring, that annual report. The department had not done it since, I think, 98? 99 was the last time it was done. And it, we can't rely on that. We must rely on a regularized, it's probably the most important thing that the planning department can be doing, is giving us a measure, where we are year by year, and how and what expectations we have, both to deal with it and to mitigate it. I think that the framework has, as proposed now, does that. What we need are the teeth to do that implementation and the mandate of the department to deliver. And with that, I think that the planning committee did recommend, there was one other thing, just quickly. There was a statement in the revised findings that I had asked in committee be changed. I didn't see the committee report reflecting that. It says that the, the statement says that the framework element ensures the adequacy of infrastructure. We can't insure it. We must attempt to provide assurance and provide other alternatives, and that's got to be changed in this finding, because we can, in no way, in this document, can ensure the adequacy that the infrastructure will always be there.
Thank you. Mr. Burnson.
Yes, members of the council, let me give you a little background about what the framework really is. Many, many years ago, when I was, came on the council, I guess, probably we started this about 15 years ago, and it took several years to get enacted, we were, we were impounded by people who questioned how, what our policy on growth was, and whether we had the sewer capacity to accommodate any growth that may take place. So, I started out with, originally, when I really started out with this thing, it was a growth management program, but it, the name changed as we went along. But it built, basically, originally, with sewer capacity. Now, most communities have, as their general plan, their, what we call our community plans, which deal with the, with the land use, the community plans, what the zoning calls for, land use, and so forth, in those, in those particular plans. We have 35 of those in our city because of the size. And we have approximately 100 specific plans within those 35, which deal specifically with the issues that these people have been talking about. What the general plan is, the framework, is for us to consider in our deliberations on land use, on how we deal with the, with the particular projects within each community plan, and within, with each specific plan, are to take into consideration housing element, sewer capacity element, transportation mitigation, and so forth. All the different things that are important to have a viable, livable community. That's what, what our framework is. Most communities don't have anything like this. They have their, what they call their general plan. Our general plans, basically, and is consistent with other cities in California, are our 35 community plans. This goes way beyond. Now, why these people who are so concerned about growth and growth management would object to us taking this extra step to ensure that we'd make good decisions in our planning efforts, I can never understand. But some people have to object to everything. And some of these people you see here today do object to everything. So, I can only tell you that I think that we've delayed this thing. It's gone back. The only reason there was any question in the courts was, the courts questioned our, whether we made the findings for a negative declaration or a, or a motion of overriding consideration. We've gone back. The planning department has made those found findings. We've taken everything into consideration. Whatever you do, I will promise you, if you went through and did a complete EIR and delayed this for five years, again, as it has been in the past, one of these people will sue you anyway. So, I would urge that we not delay this, that we go forward. Let's do it. Let's put it in place. It's a good thing for our city. It's a good thing for our planning process.
Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you, Mr. President. I understand that this is a visionary document. But vision without implementation is just that. I know that it will never be the document for our implementation, but I share some of council members, Ms. Sikowski's concerns about making sure that we have regular reporting, and that we somehow look for some recommended balancing act between looking at how upturns and downturns in the economy, deal with the transportation dollars that do come to this city, and then how that affects the sort of growth that we have. With that in mind, and I praise the work that's been done, and it is a great thing to see a city that has something cobbling that together to provide a bit of a vision. But as we become part of that vision here on that council, and as we come up to speed on what those visions are and bring our own perspectives to that, I think that we need to add those elements. So, I would move to continue this for one week, while some of us have the opportunity to look a little bit more in-depth, to, to take up some of what Councilmember Ms. Sikowski was talking about as well. And I urge my colleagues to support that.
There's a motion and a second to continue. Mr. Holden.
I support that continuation of one week. But Ms. Sikowski, you're talking about an amendment to the polls are before us, and would you restate that amendment?
I had asked in the planning committee whether or not some, the overriding consideration document was changed to more formally and really reflect what it was, and staff has assured me that that was changed.
You're talking about, you made a statement, but given the assurance.
Right. The, it had formally said that this document ensures the adequacy of transportation infrastructure, and that is not the case, and so that change has been made.
What if you, if that's not included, could the court order us to insure or not?
No. The court gave us a roadmap and a guideline of what we should do, and perhaps we can ask the city attorney or the planning department to give those details.
The court gave, Honorable, Councilmember, the court gave us three choices, one of which.
Will you hold my time while you speak? Thank you.
One of which was to adopt a statement of overriding considerations, acknowledging the fact that we could not guarantee the funding of, by the county or the state of, of the transportation program, which we typically rely on and have successfully relied on over the years. We made those findings along with additional findings relating to that. And so, that's what's before you, is this additional statement of overriding consideration. Other choices were, stop all growth until we could accommodate it, or put all the costs, the regional costs of transportation improvements on new development. So, those were the kinds of choices that the court offered us, and we chose and have recommended to your council that we adopt a statement of overriding considerations.
And the developer will run and hide. All right. In the weeks coming up, I'd like for someone to tell me, given the fact that we consider to have lost a case in court, what were the attorney fees for the prevailing side?
I have no idea.
The attorney's fees were approximately $30,000.
Oh, we got off cheap this time. But just for background information, we would not be where we are today in this competing with neighborhoods and developers, if we were to have agreed to the EPA demand that the city upgraded sewer system 20 years ago. I think you remember that. And that the federal government would have paid 80% of the cost for doing that. The city thumbed its nose up at the federal government, thinking that they were more powerful, and that's not the first time they've done that, than the federal government. So, what happened? When the federal government, EPA sued us, they won. Instead of EPA paying 80% of the cost of $5 billion to upgrade the system, which we are not doing, we had to float a bond, and the voters had to vote ultimatumally to do it. And so, that's why your sewer service charges are where they are today. And it was 15 members of the council and the mayor who said no to EPA. So, very often, the staff will come in with a recommendation to us, and it can be wrong, as that was wrong. So, just because things are recommended to us, I think, I, for one, and I'm sure others, would make an independent decision about what's right or wrong on any given issue. And that was wrong. That was a bad one. Bad choice, bad decision. And so, therefore, it controlled growth limited, because you didn't have the capacity. Now that you have the capacity, we paying the $5 billion-plus dollars to create that capacity, homeowners. And I know that's worthwhile noting.
Thank you very much. Mr. Weiss.
Mr. President, I rise in support of Mr. Garcetti's motion. And I, I do so, it was interesting, I mean, I think it was inspired in part by some of the comments we heard this morning from Mr. Twining, from Ms. Cook, from Ms. Ward. And given how important this matter is, given that it, it is important for the future of our region, I don't think that it's asking much to continue it for a week, so that it gets further study. I, I do want to recognize the work that my colleagues have put in on this. They've put in an extraordinary amount of work, and they will continue to put in work, as have the staff. And I think that it, that they ought to be recognized for that. But, you know, the folks from the Hillside Federation have worked very hard on this as well. It's important that we give full and fair consideration to this matter. And, you know, it could very well be that we come back here in a week and approve what we're being asked to approve today. But if so, I think we'll do so with a greater understanding of what motivated the lawsuit in the first place, with a greater understanding of the need in the next decade to do a better job of mitigation, of traffic management, and of growth and planning management in the future. And I think it would be a good idea for this council, if it does approve this, to do it with a fuller understanding of the consequences. And so, I would urge my colleagues to support Mr. Garcetti's motion.
Mr. Burnson.
Members of the council, I understand that we did receive a letter today, which the city attorney wants to address and answer. So, I think the continuation is in order, only because of that reason. I will tell you this. You're talking about the consideration of the traffic man, these are the very things that this framework tells you to do in each planning case. That's what you're, that's what it's for. It's not, it's not making decisions approving the pla, the, any particular plan. And the only amendment we really had to make was basically, unfortunately, in the language that was approved, there was one that said insure traffic. Well, we can't insure anything, because we don't have the ability to make assurances, because we, we base our, our ability to, to, to deal with traffic congestion upon the state and the federal government, and the county. So, it was, it's impossible to make guarantees. But we do take all of these things on traffic mitigation into consideration when we do a particular project. Let's say, Mr. Weiss, we have a project in your district, and there's a question about whether they can mitigate the traffic impact. That's called for in your community plan and your specific plan. And they have to do that. So, it isn't the general framework that we're talking about that deals with that. It just tells you that when you do your specific plans, when you deal with a case, that you have to make sure that you deal with, with the question of mitigation and traffic management and congestion, and, and other things as well. And Mr. Holden, I hope you're listening, Mr. Holden, because I want to address something that you said. You know, the, the sewer suit by the EPA was done years before I was on the council, or, yes, it was. We had, we had to approve it afterwards. But the actual order, which the city councils ignored and fought, was initiated by councils long before you or I were here, and I've been here a lot longer than you. And, but I, but I was here when we had to actually pony up and take care of it. And that's one of the things, excuse me, please. I didn't interrupt you. One of the things that, one of the reasons that we put into place our framework, the first consideration of our framework, was dealing with sewer capacity. So, we did listen, and we did learn from what our predecessors' mistakes were. And we need to move forward, and we, and this is a planning document. This is a guidepost, a directional guidepost, that tells you the things that you need to do in making your decisions, not just on individual cases, but when you redo your community plans, when you redo your specific plans, or when you have any kind of a zoning situation within your district or a plan amendment, you need to take into consideration the things that are spelled out in this document. So, in deference to the request of the city attorney and to the new members, we can continue it one week. But the things I said earlier are in place. Believe me, this is something we need to move forward on and not delay any longer. It's been delayed too long now.
Thank you, Mr. Burnson. Colleagues, a motion to continue this item for one week has been made and seconded. Clerk, please open the roll on a one-week continuance. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
12 eyes.
That item is continued for one week to August 1st. Clerk, next item, please.
Mr. President, the city attorney has advised that item number 25B, which is a closed-session item, they're recommending a continuance on that matter till August 1st.
Without objection, 25B is continued to August 1st.
Item number 13 is next. That's called, special by Councilmember Holden.
Item 13 is before us. The chair recognizes Mr. Holden.
The staff is going to come forward, I believe, Mr. President. You can hold my time. And I think it's significant for information to discuss item 13, as opposed to item 18, whereas this project went into effect, this REAP program went into effect in 1993, and it's just coming out. Question is, with people living there doing this since 1993, how did you manage that project? And why are you asking us to take it out of REAP at this time?
You are correct. The property did come into the REAP.
Speaking to Mike, sir.
The property was accepted into REAP in 1993. At that time, it was being utilized as a residential property with tenants living on the property. Currently, within the last year, the property's description has changed. The property is now commercially zoned, is being utilized as a small business site. It has eight small businesses occupying the property. Between the times that the property came into REAP in 93 and, and the current request by the department for removal, the property was vacant. For several years, between 95 and, and today, the property was unoccupied. The property was constantly being considered by the department. It was reviewed. There was numerous site visits that was.
After 1995?
Yes, that's correct.
The people didn't live there anymore?
No one lived there. But due to the fact that there was outstanding violations, the property had not been signed off either the Building and Safety Department or Code Enforcement. The Housing Department determined to keep the case open, potentially that a tenant may occupy the property, or if the owner chose to rent the units out.
Sir, all right, my time. My question is, if it's no longer used as a residential property, and not commercially used, then they had to have renovation. They had a plan. It had to be approved by Building and Safety, it had to be inspected by Building and Safety. And therefore, you were given ample notice that it was no longer intended to be used as residential property, and you could have removed it from REAP any time prior to today. And that's, I don't understand. Maybe somebody over there is not doing their job.
Well, realistically, there had been no communication to the effect that there was a plan by the owner to change the description of the property.
So, you weren't inspecting it? Because if you inspected the property, you would have known, or should have known. As you said, you inspected it.
We did inspect. We would do onsite inspections of the property, drive-by inspections of the property. You could see that there was rehabilitation going on, but not necessarily.
Or I'm not going to belabor the point. I'll just say that you guys didn't do a good job on this project. It's in my district. You didn't follow through? In my district, you didn't follow through. Property changes use, and you knew and should have known. And you should have done something about it long before now. Is that correct? You can say yes earlier than I do, but that's okay. All right.
Thank you very much. Any other members wishing to speak on this item? Clerk, please open the roll on item thirteen. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
That item is approved. Next item, please.
Mr. President, item number twenty, called special by Councilmember Garcetti.
Colleagues, item twenty is now before us. Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you, Mr. President. Is there staff here to answer questions about this? The item before us right now is dealing, again, with creative ways of addressing domestic violence in our communities. One of these, I believe, is in my district, African Community Resource Center, which recently opened up the first shelter for refugees in the United States who are victims, survivors of domestic violence. Just wanted to ask a simple question about whether there's been coordination where these four programs are, whether those are in divisions that currently have DART teams as well? And are those, are these working together? Has there been coordination between those?
Good morning. Kathleen O'Leary Leferman with the Mayor's Criminal Justice Planning Office. Yes, Councilmen, there is coordination now in those LAPD divisions. And in fact, we're going to underscore it by beginning the program with a kind of kickoff meeting, if you will, with Commander Zimmern, who is the Domestic Violence Coordinator, at which time he'll be meeting with the officers in charge and the captains of each of the divisions to let them know that the department is really supporting this program. In West, we have, I mean, in the Valley, we have Haven Hills. They've been conducting a coordinated response team for some time with Van Nuys. And I do know that Project Peacemakers has been working very closely with Seventy-Seventh Division. African Community Resource Center is, I think, beginning their coordinated response team and will be working with Hollywood and Wilshire. And then we have the California Hospital. Yes, that collaborative is, has already been working very closely with the LAPD, which is, you know, one of the criteria for this program, to, you know, to be already connected and active.
One final question. Are each of these then responsible for the entire bureaus in coverage for the entire bureau theoretically?
Well, you know, happily, they're located in each of the four bureaus, but they'll still be a target area because, you know, we can't be too unrealistic about, you know, the size of the grant and the size of the need. So they'll be targeted to, and one of the things that's unique about this program is we're really trying to address families where there's, you know, repeat family violence so that, because it seems to just be continuing in some of our target families.
Okay. Thank you. And colleagues, I think that this investment, we'll look forward to hearing back how this works with two hundred thousand dollars per bureau. But this is certainly something, especially if you're going to those repeat families, that for those fiscal watchdogs out there, certainly makes a lot of financial sense as well as moral sense. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other members wishing to speak? Clerk, please open the roll on item number twenty.
Mr. President, a motion is required from the floor inasmuch as there's two reports on the file.
I move the Budget and Finance Committee report. It's the one that includes the recommendations for public safety and is more up to date.
Any discussion? The Budget and Finance report is moved. Clerk, please open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
That item is approved. And the communication from the Chair of Public Safety is receiving filed. Correct.
Mr. President.
Mr. Ridley-Thomas.
May I move reconsideration on item number twenty-six for the purposes of submitting an amending motion that was in circulation when the matter was taken up?
Colleagues, request for consideration, reconsideration, item twenty-six. Any discussion on that? Ms. Mrkowsky. Open the roll. Clerk, please, on reconsideration. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Twelve ayes.
That item is now reconsidered. Mr. Ridley-Thomas.
Thank you, Mr. President. Twenty-six A is before you and I move adoption of the amending motion as submitted.
Any members wishing to speak on item twenty-six A? Seeing none, clerk, please open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Twenty-six A has now been adopted. Fourth with on that item. Next item, please.
Mr. President, I understand there is a special one that is being distributed at this time. The clerk does not have a copy as of yet.
Members, who's bringing in special one? Mr. Burnson?
Yes, this item was originally scheduled for Rule sixteen, but somehow went to committee. But Mr. Holden was kind enough to act on it immediately and send it forth. This is an opposition to a piece of legislation that would divert funds from some of our city projects, some of our county projects, and place another project ahead of that list, which was a call for projects approved by our Transportation Commission. As such, it's pretty much a violation of local control and so forth. And MTA is opposing, and I think most jurisdictions within the county are voicing opposition. And hopefully, the author, who is a good friend of mine, Jenny Orpezza, will reconsider and find another way to fund this project, which is a worthy project, but the process is wrong. So I would urge that we make the findings, number one, to hear this as a special, as a special today so it can be forwarded to the state legislature, which will be considering it in committee, and that we approve it. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I might just also add that my understanding is that the budget, the state budget is imminent, and that would go towards the findings that there's an immediate need to act.
Right. That goes towards the findings. Ms. Hahn, did you wish to speak on the findings?
Let me just speak on this motion as well. This is something I'm very involved in. Just for some background, as you know, the two-point-eight-billion-dollar Alameda corridor is planning to be completed next year. There was one intersection that was left off the table in terms of grade separation, and it was an intersection of Pacific Coast Highway and Alameda, which, of course, is in my dear community of Wilmington, which always gets forgotten. The impact to that community is going to be a nightmare as a result of the trains continually to drive through that community with no grade separation. Caltrans was supposed to build this grade separation. It's been their project for ten years. They, like other Caltrans projects, they have not done this. So we came to a problem where it has to be built. We have to have a grade separation. There's about a forty-two-million-dollar gap from the money available to what needs to build this grade separation. I am opposed to Ms. Orpezza's bill, as I agree it takes away money from future MTA projects. We are, I am actively working to find that forty-two million dollars, and as of now, we believe we have found that money. It's going to be a combination of the state money, the MTA has appropriated a small amount of their money, and then the ports will probably kick in the remainder. So we are going to find that funding component.
Mr. Burnson.
Yes, right. Right. So we're coming to a solution. We don't need this bill to make it happen.
Mr. Burnson, did you wish to speak again?
No, it's none, Mr. President.
Okay. Clerk, please open the roll on findings for special one. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Colleagues, special one is now before us. Any members wishing to speak on the item? Seeing none, clerk, please open the roll on special one. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
That item is approved. Let's end up fourth with. Mr. Clerk, next item, please.
Mr. President, item number twenty-five is a closed-session item. Do you wish to hold that on the desk?
Let's hold that on the desk. Mr. Ridley-Thomas, did you wish to speak?
Yes. Fourth with on item number six, please, Mr. President.
Item number six, fourth with. On number five as well. Mr. Clerk, housekeeping?
Now it's time for public comment on non-agenda items.
Let's go to public comments. This is the opportunity for members of the public to address the council on items not appearing on today's agenda. The council calls forward Larry Ross.
Today, I will begin by saying that the federal government, the state government, the city government, and the county government are behind the abuses and violations that shall be enumerated forthcoming. And they are intentional, intentional being exposed to the harsh weather environments, intentional trying to induce stress and mental anguish or trauma, intentional trying to destroy the quality of life and health, intentional subjected to natural and artificial created cold environments, intentional and continuous efforts to cause defibrillations and/or permanent damages, intentional internally induced bleeding or mayhem caused by means of their toys or playthings, I refer to them as being the methods. The government sanctioned the selling of dangerous defective products to me. The government sanctioned the selling of defective products. The government sanctioned the spying and the dissemination of inflammatory materials and lies against me. The government sanctioned the infringements and encroachments upon the ideas, works, and projects which I refer to as being Operation Wait and Take, because they wait until I come up with one before they take it. The government sanctioned the intentional design to damage and destroy the speaking and singing voices of mine. And the list of abuses and violations could go on and on and on and on.
If I can ask you to conclude, please.
All of the above, the U.S. Supreme Court has original jurisdiction. There is no one who is above the law, not that body even. So who are the ones who would sit or stand with the audacity and say beforehand what the outcome of the matter, with certain exception, shall be, before it being heard by the proper body, or let me reword it, before the qualified--
Thank you very much.
--and authorized body has had the opportunity to hear it? Could not have been more than three minutes.
Thank you. This concludes public comment for today. Mr. Clerk?
Left on the agenda is item number twenty-five A, which is a closed-session item. Do you wish to clear the desk?
Let's clear the desk. Motions for posting and referral. Motions are posted and referred. Item twenty-five is now before you. In accordance with California code, we will go into closed session. Guards, please clear the chamber. Clerk, what remains before us? The desk is clear. Colleagues, any adjourning motions? Mr. Burnson? Mr. Garcetti?
Colleagues, I ask you to adjourn in memory of Carol Jean Thomas Fajardo. Carol was an extraordinary woman. She was not only gentle, but strong, intelligent, and fiercely loyal. She was an activist who defended immigrants' rights with a passion. She worked for the Mexican-American Legal Defense Fund, the civil rights firm of Lit and Stormer, and as a field deputy for Supervisor Gloria Molina. She was passionate about her work. Many of you know her husband, I'm sure, Richard Fajardo. She worked on the Los Angeles County redistricting case. She was involved in raising funds for Caresan and was extremely devoted to the cause of refugees and helping them settle into this country. Her work and passion clearly reflected her love and commitment to justice. She also loved music, art, and animals, and loved without reserve her husband and her family and her community. She is loved by so many and will be missed by all with her premature passing. She is survived by her husband, Richard Fajardo, her sister Marcy, her niece Cannon K., and her great nieces Kimberly, Michelle, and Ryan.
Thank you. Mr. Ridley-Thomas, and I would like to second that. Any others? Mr. Ridley-Thomas.
Thank you, Mr. President. Members of the council, I'd ask that you join me in adjourning in memory of Mrs. Hortensia Menjades, who passed away this past Sunday after a lengthy illness. It's of significance to us because she is the mother of Sandy Grange. And as you know, Sandy worked for the city for many, many years and retired just this past year from the city clerk's office as a legislative assistant. She also worked as the minute clerk here in the council's shut sessions. And so it's with a great degree of sadness that we prize you of the passing of Sandy's mother, and we wish to send to her our deepest sense of sympathy and our condolences.
Thank you. Mr. Weiss?
Yes, I'd like the council to adjourn in the memory of Shirley Weiss-Bay, who was the mother of my dear friend David Weiss, and the wife first of Julian Weiss, and then Max Bay, whom many of you knew. She was a great philanthropist, a wonderful patron of the arts, and she was the founder of Portals, which is really the first mental health rehabilitation services organization in the West. And she'll be dearly missed. And I'll give the clerk the pertinent information.
Mr. Zein?
Request adjournment in honor of Rafael Agoniga, passed away Monday, July twenty-third, resident of the San Fernando Valley for over twenty-five years, survived by two daughters and four sons. One of his daughters is Maria, who's the receptionist in my council office.
Any others? Clerk, please call the roll. Thank you very much. This meeting is adjourned.
You are watching L.A. City View, Channel Thirty-Five, your city, your channel.